Good evening. The Jackson Public School Board Meeting is now called to order. Board members, we have six members present. We have four here in the boardroom and two on the phone, Ms. Johnson and Dr. Hairston. Therefore, we have a quorum. We have all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Ms. Thompson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Next, we have all had an opportunity to review the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the February 24th special board meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Thompson has moved. Mr. Figur has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Now, onto the superintendent's report. Dr. Green.
Thank you, Dr. Sevek. Good evening to all of our board members and our various stakeholders who are joining us. We'll begin, as we typically do, with our highlights reel.
A ribbon-cutting ceremony at Hughes Field in West Jackson. Dignitaries from across the city gathered, including Jackson Mayor Choquey Antar Lumumba, to witness the improvements to the sports complex.
We appreciate that y'all continue to support us, and we look forward to delivering more and more excellence with these facilities over time.
Made possible by a JPS multimillion-dollar bond initiative.
It was an intentional decision to make this investment right here in West Jackson.
A newly renovated 5,000-seat stadium, turf football field, resurfaced track, lockers, and many other upgrades mark the beginning of a new era of sports for the Jackson Public School District. A warm welcome for U.S. Secretary of Education Dr. Miguel Cardona at Casey Elementary School.
You walk into a school you know, if you're walking into an environment where kids want to be.
The secretary toured classrooms.
I love how you looked at the pictures and you were able to summarize it.
Engaged with students.
Bounce around from class to class, right? Do you think that's going to be easy or hard?
Participated in an art design and offered positive feedback in a panel discussion.
Every student told me this is an arts-based program, or we use the arts. Students were really engaged. Congratulations to you. I know you have great plans here, and you can continue to lift the literacy and numeracy rates here and just the performance of students.
Jackson Public Schools, transcending language barriers at Bates Elementary School, where hundreds attended the English Learner Parent and Community Spring Forum.
Just want to build that partnership with our parents, especially our English learner parents.
We've given out some awards for high performance for some of our scholars who are learning to speak proficiently in English and read proficiently.
I want to thank everybody here, the staff, the superintendents, principals, everybody who came here today.
It's just wonderful to have so many of our families here in supporting education and building community.
And a wonderful opportunity for our Spanish-speaking community to learn about the services and opportunities available at JPS. A luncheon at the Mississippi Civil Rights Museum to celebrate the National School Counseling Week, to honor school counselors across the JPS district for their service, to give one outstanding educator recognition as JPS Counselor of the Year.
Our Counselor of the Year. It's a great day to be in charge, or Carmen Taylor.
Congratulations, Carmen Taylor of Callaway High School. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at www.jackson.k12.ms.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools, on Twitter at JPS District, Comcast Channels 18 and 19, and YouTube at www.youtube.com/JPSITV.
Thank you, team. I want to really acknowledge your continued work to provide some really sharp videos. These highlight reels are really nice. I get a chance to preview them, board members, and to see them again and relive some of those moments. Just appreciate your efforts to keep us informed and to celebrate all the, even a snippet, actually, of the things that are going on in our district. So, thank you to the entire public relations team and ITV in particular. Want to go next. Okay, March is designated as Women's History Month by a presidential proclamation. The month is set aside to honor women's contributions throughout American history. Tonight, we tried to get away from some of the normal, maybe normal, but perhaps usual suspects and highlight someone that you may not have heard of. And so, we're highlighting May Reeves, who was born October 29th, 1912, and deceased December 14th, 2016. She was among the first African-American women to own a business in downtown Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Mrs. Reeves was a pioneering milliner. All right, so, oh, you already see it. I was going to ask, do you know what that means, milliner? Which is a hat maker, a custom hat maker. And she opened May's Millinery Shop in 1934. Her clients included celebrities such as Ella Fitzgerald, Lena Horne, Eartha Kitt, Marion Anderson, as well as socialites from very wealthy families like the DuPonts and Annenberg's. In 2016, the Smithsonian National Museum of African-American History and Culture opened with a permanent exhibit of Reeves' extensive collection, including the shop's original red neon sign, sewing machine, and some antique furniture. May Reeves is just one of the many remarkable women all across the country and throughout American history who are doing, have done, and are doing some amazing things to bolster our communities. So, please go to the JPS website for more information about these and other amazing women in our history. And our website, of course, is www.jackson.k12.ms.us. Board members, March the 5th through the 11th, we're just celebrating all month here, is National School Social Workers Week. Did you know that? All right, now you know. The 2023 theme is "We Rise." The School Social Work Association of America states that school social workers rise up, supporting their students, their families, and school communities. They rise up to share hope. They rise to listen and understand. They rise to challenge inequities, and they rise to support all students. We want to recognize our four JPS school social workers, Ms. Avant, Ms. Peterson, Ms. Jackson, and Ms. Robertson. We sincerely appreciate them and all the work that they do every day, and along with other team members, to support and serve our scholars and their families. Do we happen to have either of our school social workers in the house? Not here tonight. All right. So, in their absence, just want to lift them up and give them a round of applause. Board members, I want to take this opportunity to highlight some recent efforts in our state's legislature to increase funding and fully fund the Mississippi Adequate Education Program, MAEP. Without getting into all of the legislative maneuvering and all the technical aspects of lawmaking, and especially around public education funding, I just want to lift up my voice in appreciation for those efforts by legislators who really seem to understand how critical it is to fully fund our schools and to ensure that we have the resources to do the work that we've been tasked to do. In addition, I want to clarify something that I've seen in the news, I believe it was either yesterday or today, regarding the proposed increased funding. JPS reportedly stands to gain 14-plus million dollars in the next year in funding, and I want you to please note that this includes the teacher pay raise funding that went into effect this school year, and that was provided outside of the regular funding formula for this school year. So, we got the regular funding formula plus the funding to support the teacher pay raise, which they absolutely deserve, and even more. But I want to clarify that those were funded separately last, or for this school year. By including that $11.7 million of funding for the teacher pay raise in the formula, our net increase, as it's been proposed for next year, is more like about $2.8 million, not the $14 million that's being reported in the news. Now, we're pleased to receive that increase of 2.8 or so million, if that's what actually happens in the final bill. I do want to just be clear to those who may have seen the news that we wouldn't be standing to have an increase of $14 million to our net funding. All right, just want to provide that context. I believe we've demonstrated our commitment to excellence here in Jackson Public Schools and to preparing our scholars to live full lives. We've seen increased attention from state and national entities. You saw the visit from the U.S. Secretary of Education. We visited with the state superintendent of education. Several of the national funders and state and perhaps even some local funders have joined us and are paying attention to the work that we're doing. Our data is up. We're operating more efficiently and working to continue to operate even more efficiently as an entity. So, I just encourage all of us to monitor that legislation and follow, and hopefully to support the continued efforts to fund, fully fund, our schools and fund them in ways that we can deliver on the promises that we're making to our scholars and families and to communities. Lastly, board members, you, a couple of board meetings ago, you requested some charter school enrollment data. And so, we've compiled some data from 2016 through 2023. Dr. Faith Strong, our Director of Management and Enrollment Services, will join us now to, just to briefly share a bit of that data as we've compiled it here. Dr. Strong, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Board President Dr. Sevek, Superintendent Dr. Green, board members. As Dr. Green stated, the following data was compiled as a follow-up request from the February 7th board meeting. So, we have prepared a grade-level analysis for over an eight-year period. This compares the number of students that left JPS versus the students that enrolled back in JPS from attending a charter school. So, three questions were posed to Dr. Green during that board meeting, and so, based on the data prepared by our data accountability team, these are our findings. The first question was, what percentage of our students are leaving and returning from charter schools? So, from the data analysis chart, you can actually see that over an eight-year period, we have 4,508 students that actually left JPS. Then, we had a total of 2,235 that enrolled back in JPS, which is roughly about 50%. But once again, this is over an eight-year period, and we do have a summary of each individual year broken down for your review. The next question was, are there any consistent trends among the years? And as we look at the actual line graph, you can see that our students are leaving us in grades fourth and fifth. There's a drastic increase there. We have a slight decline in grade six, and then, as you see, in grade seven, we're gaining and losing them at the same time. And then, a little slight decrease in eighth, and then, of course, an increase in ninth grade, and this is because of no high school charter schools. And then, the last question that was asked was, are our students returning from the charter schools to participate in our special programs? And based on the data, we only found that about five to eight students actually enrolled back in JPS from a charter school to attend Barack Obama in 2021 and 2022, and those grade levels were third, fourth, and fifth. So, are there any additional questions?
First of all, thank you for the analysis. This, I think we're sitting with it, and it would be wonderful if we could get copies of this presentation, and maybe even, and they may have been in the materials.
I don't believe so.
Okay, it would be great if we could, and even a summary. Your remarks were actually very helpful in terms of contextualizing the data as well, and then, we may come back with some questions between now and the next meeting or at the next meeting, but I just want to express appreciation. I know the board has been very interested in this information and appreciate you bringing it back to us.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Strong, and thank you for standing in and sharing that in Dr. Merritt's absence. Board members, that concludes my remarks for this evening. Happy to get this information to you, so you have that in your hands and absolutely willing to engage in further discussion on this data and as we just continue to watch our enrollment trends and our engagement with charters. With that, thank you, Dr. Sevek. I turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Do we have any, it looks like we do have a public comment tonight, so we would, Ms. Diamond Bigum, we would invite her up to the microphone to share our public comment. While the team gets the microphone ready, I just want to remind the public that anyone who would like to make public comments should email their request to Ms. Rosalyn Williams at roswilliams@jackson.k12.ms.us, no later than 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting, or appear in person in the boardroom no later than 5:15 the day of the meeting. Is Ms. Bigum here?
It's Bigham.
Bigham, I'm sorry.
It was an email request.
It was an email request. Okay, it appears, Ms. Diamond Bigum. Okay. Well, if she does appear before the end of the meeting, just let us know, and we'll make sure we create space for that public comment. So, with that, we'll move on with our agenda. Before we move on to the information-only items, Dr. Green, I do want to thank you for sharing the update on the MAEP formula, both in terms of the clarification, but also just the work of our delegation to advance it. I have heard, I heard from Senator Blunt earlier and other members, just that they're working hard to make sure that's fully funded. It makes a huge difference, you know, and so, just want to appreciate you for lifting that up, and we'll continue to follow it. So, next, we will move on to our information-only items. Ms. Robinson, our Executive Director of Facilities and Operations, and Ms. Franklin, our Real Property and Construction Director, will join us to share our monthly update of our bond program. Ms. Robinson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Sevek, board members, Dr. Green. At the first board meeting of each month, we have the pleasure of providing the bond In tonight's presentation, we will provide construction updates, the bond financial report, the ribbon-cutting event that was held at Hughes Field, and ESSER updates. Tonight's update will be brief, and Ms. Franklin will provide the construction updates also. She will provide, I think Mr. Sherwin Johnson is helping me here until I get this remote figured out tonight, and then, we'll answer any questions at the end.
Good evening, board members, JPS family. We'll start as we usually do. As you know, we're winding down on our bond projects. The interior of the JRTC building at Forest Hill, it's complete. We have had some delays with the HVAC equipment. It's had exceedingly long lead time, but the interior of this building is complete. Moving on to our baseball and softball field, we're continuing to make progress here. Contractors are working on installing storm drains and the irrigation system. Adjacent to the baseball and softball fields, our Hughes Field project, we have completed that project. It included renovating all of the existing buildings there, and on the left, you see the new concession stand and ticket booth that we were able to add. Also, we were able to turf the field and also get a 200-plus car parking lot that's paved with this project. And to commemorate the end of that project, we did have our ribbon-cutting, as you saw the highlights earlier. We did have this last Thursday, and here's just a photo of all of our ribbon cutters. Here's an update of our financials. Since last month, we've increased to 95% expended and encumbered, which totals about $63.7 million spent. Still, $5, $5.5 million encumbered, and a remainder, remaining about $3 million for other projects. And these next three slides just show what's been expended and encumbered at each school Next, as we move into our ESSER projects, some of these projects will combine ESSER and bond funding. The Wingfield crawl space repairs, that's already come to you in February to be awarded, that's actually a bond project, and it will satisfy an MDE cap requirement. Also, on tonight's agenda to be awarded is the Wells A-PAC renovations, and that includes restroom renovations and some other things. Also, we've opened bids for Brinkley and Powell Middle School renovations, and you'll be seeing that later on in the month. At John Hopkins, we actually opened bids there on Friday for that project. And some of our other significant projects, we have a complete renovation at Pecan Park Elementary School. Some other projects include renovations at Clausell, Boyd, and Green, and we have a full HVAC upgrade at Jim Hill High School. Some other projects at our elementary school are some window replacements at Lake and Smith. Wingfield High School will also receive some additional restroom renovations, HVAC upgrades, and window replacements. The Witten restroom renovations are actually back out to bid for the second time. And another significant project that we want to highlight that's advertising now is our Bailey A-PAC Magnet School, and that project includes a new roof, a complete HVAC system, and restroom renovations, and we open bids for it the first week in April. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Board members, any questions, comments?
Excuse me, Dr. Sevek, I only want to just thank our colleagues for doing such good work and the good reporting back to us on the progress of the bond work.
Thank you, Dr. Hairston. Ms. Franklin, I'll just echo that as well. It was, it was a wonderful day to be over at Hughes Field, and I know that has worked. It is just, it's taken many years to get there, but it is a space that competes with any space in the state in terms of just the quality of the facility and locker rooms and concessions, so just hats off to you, your team, everybody whose hands touch that. I just, I'm so excited for our students to be able to both play on that field, to watch games on that field, for the community, to be able to use the track. It's just, it's just absolutely wonderful, so thank you for that. And I will also, I do have a question. So, I know that the Wells A-PAC, in the theme of student spaces, spaces for student recreation, that it is focused on the restrooms, and so, I know at one point, we were talking about doing renovations to the auditorium, but I did not see that on the bid. Are there plans to create a performing arts space in the north part of the city to commensurate with what we've done in the south part of the city?
Yes, there are. Do you want me? Yeah, we're actually going to take some of those funds and add additional funds to focus that space at Bailey. That's, that's what our plans are. And just because the seating capacity at Bailey is about 800, as opposed to only 250 seats at Wells, so we think we get a larger impact putting that space at Bailey.
Great, so the plan is to really invest deeply in the Bailey space to create, is it, I mean, is it just going to be paint and all that, or is it like we're going all-in on it?
We want to go all-in.
Or half, almost, between halfway and all-in or something, just in terms of the quality of the space?
More than paint, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
We want it to be comparable to the Forest Hill space.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for that update.
Yeah. And to that, I'll just echo the vision and the plans to invest in that Bailey space when we, as we prepare to bring those scholars, well, to do the work, finish the work, and bring those scholars back into that building. Really looking forward, I remember the, one of my first or first few visits to the Bailey school, but specifically that auditorium. I don't know if folks have been there, and if you haven't, like, you're in for a treat. When we do the work to bring some life back to that, it's going to be a wonderful performance space, and so, excited to have the Wells A-PAC space for rehearsals and maybe for mini performances and that sort of thing, but then, to move the larger events to the Bailey space where we can house more folks, and it's just a larger stage, and as we invest in lighting and all those things, just a more polished experience all the way around. Really excited to do that.
Great, thank you, Dr. Green.
I too just want to just echo publicly, thanks for all the work that the team has done to get us to this place. I know because I have, you know, clear line of sight to conversations and hits that folks, that you two in particular have taken as we've continued with these bond projects, but I'm just, I'm super proud of the work that you've done, the work that you've led, all of the various partners that you've had to engage with, and voices that you've had to manage as we've gotten to this. So, excited to continue the work at Hughes and for other projects that we have on tap. Thank you. Sincerely, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Green, again. Thank you, Ms. Robinson and Ms. Franklin. Next, we'll invite Dr. Samicia Stokes to join us to provide the after-school update. Dr. Stokes is the Executive Director of the Office of Innovation Strategy.
To President Sevek, Superintendent Green, board members, and JPS family, good evening. I am humbled and pleased to provide our after-school enrichment reported programs that help our scholars learn, innovate, and grow. I am Samicia Stokes, Executive Director of the Office of Innovative Strategy, bringing your greetings. The underpinnings of our JPS strategic plan are emphasized throughout our after-school program, with specific emphasis on commitment, innovative teaching and learning, and joyful learning environments. With increased access to after-school experiences, all schools are offering an after-school program, with many local partners assisting this work, and nearly 3,500 scholars enrolled. As it relates to promoting scholar attendance in after-school, our numbers are uneven across divisions, and more will be done to increase rates for our secondary scholars in particular. We are supporting our academic divisions in the area of writing, particularly focusing on middle school. This focused development is being tracked to better understand the value add of after-school on MAP writing performance. We are currently planning our work for summer learning and utilizing our after-school learning to develop the strongest summer learning programming possible. In this slide, you see a recent visit with the Secretary of Education, Dr. Cardona, along with some of our partners, three out of the 16 to be exact, who participated in a panel discussion on our use of ESSER funds to support extended learning. JPS is on the map for the use of these federal dollars to support learning recovery. I would add that we're the only district in the state of Mississippi utilizing ESSER funds to support district-wide after-school programs, investing $2.3 million respectively. Secretary Cardona expressed his desire to support the sustainability of this programming, and our vision for the after-school program endeavors to do just that. In line with our three-year vision for after-school, you will see for year one, our focus is on increasing access, year two, youth-centric programming, and year three, skill development. And now, our partners. I'm introducing them to you. It takes a village, it takes us all working together. Here's our after-school partner village, if you will. We thank them for their leadership. As an elementary scholar, students engage in a small group tutorial sessions, arts and craft activities, and homework help. In these photos from middle school- In these photos from middle school, you will see scholars engaged in the production of the whiz, learning to sew with the Jackson Medical Mall, and engaged in accelerated reading practices. Here at high school, our beam paths scholars learn to code in the makerspace environment, have small group conversations on their career paths, and engage in public speaking practice. Last year, we served 1,932 scholars in after-school. This year's projection was to serve 3,375 scholars. We exceeded this projection with 3,482 scholars enrolled. We met our goal by increasing enrollment by over 80% over last year. Here, we examine our ADA, which is our average daily attendance for all divisions, and among those divisions, we feel positively about our overall attendance in the elementary program at 74.7%. As we look at this data and speak with students, there are many competing priorities for our secondary scholars, time including athletics, other extracurricular activities, jobs, and family obligations. Of course, we're addressing these attendance gaps, and they include the following. We are engaging our partners to recruit for their programs early and considering ways to incentivize our partners with stronger levels of scholar attendance and retention. We are also reconnecting with our vision for scholar-centric programs, which goes back to this slide, involving our scholars in the design process and asking them what they want and would be excited to commit to and attend. Internally, we're also convening with our school-based coordinators and leads to set attendance goals, to assure accountability for the fiscal stewardship of the program. And finally, we're reviewing the best school sites for future programming based on supportive attendance measures. I would be remiss if we did not thank our ELA team for providing the support. Our ELA content sessions on writing were, we had the Corporation of the Bailey Group and OTL, among others, that provided the support for writing instruction. Speaking of best practices, increasing students' writing scores on the MAP 2023 would be a contributing factor to the school performance outcomes on this assessment. Again, this is a group of ELA teachers attending a training at Ole Miss to learn some additional writing best practices. As for MAP writing, students are tested on four domains, also known as standards, based upon the MDE writing rubric. A student needs nine to 11 writing points to score proficient, 12 points to score advanced. And of course, the goal is to help students increase the number of points needed to score on the MAP writing assessment. Let's go a little deeper with a shared understanding about how students can increase their writing score with respect to a school's rating increased. You've been provided the elementary, middle, and high school data. In the interest of time, I will review data for the middle school only. Based upon the historical data for the past three consecutive years, middle school students in grades six through eight scored 50% or more correct on the two domains that carry the least amount of points, which would be grammar and mechanics, as you can see evidenced by the percentages circled. On the other hand, middle school students scored 50% or less percent on the domains that carry the most points, that would be development of ideas and organization. Looking at the arrows representing these two domains, you find that the scoring percentages of less than 50% parallel each other for three years and for all three grade levels. Based upon this valuable data, ELA teachers across the district are using the MDE writing rubric to increase students' writing scores by placing greater emphasis on development of ideas and organization, since these two categories combined yield eight of the, eight out of the 12 possible writing points. Statistical analysis of the scores revealed a strong correlation between increased writing MAP scores and the impact on a school's letter grade accordingly. As we look at our programming strengths, our elementary parents are well pleased with the Monday through Friday after-care option, and there is strong cross-functional planning among departments. In terms of our next steps, we're looking at sustainability of after-school programs, also transportation challenges, and the learning conditions. Under that umbrella would fall youth voice, youth interest, youth lives, and family connections. In terms of our implications for summer planning, we have cross-functional planning that we will continue with. We have the academic structure of the program, enrollment process, transportation challenges, family engagement, and also summer reading initiatives that will be employed through summer programming. Our summer program will begin June the 5th and end June the 30th. We have increased access to out-of-school experiences. We're working to promote scholar attendance in after-school. We're focusing on writing instruction, particularly in the middle school space, and we are currently planning our work for summer learning. In the words of our superintendent, "Amazing things are destined for JPS." That would be accurate. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Stokes. Board members, any questions, comments? Well, I'd say I appreciated the use of the data to, to, to illustrate the connection between the, the work that we're doing after-school and how that affects the overall performance in the schools. And anytime we can tie that back, that helps us as a board and forms our decision-making. So, thank you for adding that. The enrollment numbers are great, and it's great to see them going up, and when we can see those tied to performance, that's, that's exactly what we want to see. So, thank you for drawing that connection.
Awesome. Thank you kindly.
If there are no other questions, I'll just say thank you again to Dr. Stokes. There's so much that's happening in our after-school programming, so many partners, so many moving parts, so lots to manage there, and you can very easily get caught up in the, the logistics, as I'm sure you might imagine, across our entire district. What I appreciate is this team under Dr. Stokes' leadership. We continue to focus on outcomes for children. Y'all know, we, you know, we can't get away from our accountability system, right? Even if you wanted to, you can't get away from that. And I'm pushing hard on our team that, you know, I want to keep lifting up that it's important to know how to write well, even if it weren't tested, right?
Yes, sir.
The good thing is, this is a good thing to learn, and it can help us on this test. And so, we went out either way, but just want to lift up that, you know, this focus on writing, I'm, I'm so excited to see it more and more in after-school. I'm hearing about it more and more in schools, and so, I, I'm confident that you will hear us talk more about writing skills and developing writing skills throughout our programming, not just in the after-school program. So, kudos for all of this hard work, and I know you're already planning for, you know, the next rung of, of performance and delivery.
Yes, sir.
For scholars and, and families. Also, just want to name that I've gotten unsolicited notes from team members about Dr. Stokes' leadership and about after-school programming. So, you know, I'm minding my business, and then here come emails from people saying how great after-school is. It's kind of nice to get that kind of feedback from our peers, who sometimes can be critical. So, just want to name that publicly for Dr. Stokes. And thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Green, and thank you for your leadership. I appreciate you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Stokes. Now, we will move on to our school improvement updates. Dr. McDonald, I believe, will share this. Dr. Cormick?
There it is.
All right. Dr. Cormick is going to walk us through this information.
Good evening, Dr. Sevak, board president, Dr. Green, members of the board, and our JPS team and family. Tonight, I'll furnish the update on performance of our schools in federal improvement for the Office of School Support. You have seen the data. We provide some contextual comparison information between benchmark performance from benchmark one to benchmark two, with a special emphasis on our schools that have been designated as within federal improvement. Several of the questions that were asked in preparation were related to high schools and how we could account for some of the positive gains that we saw, specifically at Lanier High School. We did emphasize that the data listed, there was an input in error. And so, the correct data I will furnish is a jump from 7% on the first benchmark in, in algebra to benchmark two, which was 28.7%. So, it was an increase, but not quite at the level that had originally been listed. That would be an increase of 21.7%, so still sizable, and we believe that that is attributable to greater focus around Acceleration Fridays, which focus on priority standards, as well as a district or a division-wide emphasis on the review preview strategy, which focuses on use of do-nows and exit tickets. Entry information, looking at what has been previously taught, and exit tickets to ensure that the lessons, the daily lesson objective has been taught to mastery. As well, an online data wall, guided and scaffolded notes, and then coaching supports, which this board has supported from both the Kirkland Group and the lead math coach. We are looking to replicate that across the divisions, looking again at high schools. All high schools did increase proficiency in benchmark, from benchmark one to benchmark two, which we're pleased with, with an increase of 13.3 points from benchmark one to benchmark two. While that performance was uneven, all did demonstrate growth, and specifically at those schools that experienced less growth, there were some challenges related to staffing and some resignations in the second term. We have looked to address that by some shift of personnel from one high school, and again, this board has supported our foray into supporting international educators in the district in those critical shortage areas. And so, Wingfield is the recipient of one of those new educators as part of the team. We are looking broadly, though, around our teacher recruitment and, and retention strategies and the professional development to support them in their work. Some other specific strategies that were implemented to increase U.S. history proficiency included, again, the review preview strategy, there are use of quick reads from the student map, and of course, review guides, as well as visual aids, and I'm really excited about the visual aids, the installation of timelines across the, in every U.S. history classroom throughout the district. There are thematic timelines that ground the instruction and that are referred to often that helped students to orient to major historical events and understand the contextual understanding as, and so, we've replicated an effective strategy at elementary with these anchor charts for our high school scholars. We are looking to replicate that performance across high schools in the district. Speaking succinctly, all high schools did increase in proficiency, again, from benchmark one to two in U.S. history performance with an increase of 7.1 percentage points. A few schools did, again, experience some staffing challenges in the social studies realm, specifically Forest Hill, but we're looking to backfill those supports, and those teachers are continuing to receive dynamic coaching supports, was able to view a CT3 observation where the teachers received real-time feedback, and that's the strategy where particularly a novice teacher has a headset inside of their ear, and they receive coaching directions from our team members in real time, in a way that is discreet and that the scholars, you know, they don't even blink. And so, they're able to receive those common tips to make them more aware and to help to streamline and to accelerate their growth as educators. So, those are a few of the updates in response to the questions that were posed. Relative to our middle schools, we are providing additional resourcing. Specifically, we do believe that the middle division has adequate instructional and financial resources, and we engage with principals and other middle school team members to support more qualified human asset strategy. So, we're working with Dr. Knolls and the team as we look to build the staffing map for next year. And again, we appreciate this board's support of our calendar for the year ahead, which will provide additional focus professional development days, an additional five calendar days without scholars where we'll be able to provide more intensive professional development support.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Cormick. Board members, are there any other questions around the school improvement reports? I'll just say thank you for all the feedback regarding the questions associated with the data review. One kind of specific question relative to the update on the data from Lanier, the U.S. history benchmark, it's, it looked like that, that was the, the numbers where as they were reported, there wasn't, and that was like 30 percentage point gain, and so, which was four times higher than the average for the high schools is what it looks like. And I know that these are, if I'm reading it right. And so, I know that these aren't, it's not comprehensive, it's based on the content that's taught for history. Is, is the, is the difference there, is it just we've got qualified history teachers in place and we don't? Is it, is it that simple?
I wouldn't reduce it to simply that, but there are disparities in terms of teacher experience with the content and whatnot, and some, and some shifts. We also, as we've shared with the board previously, as an example, at Mura, with the AP sequence, often that sequencing is oft, and as the full content completes, we look for benchmark three to be the best indicator of overall performance as the whole sweep of history at, at that, by that point, has more or less been instructed. And so, we do expect that those schools that have lesser numbers or lesser growth over this period of time will show more profound growth in the, in benchmark three.
Great. Thank you. The other thing I think that's worth lifting up is I can remember going through these reports several years ago, and they were much longer. And so, it, I think that means we need to take time to lift up the work of the team that's been done to reduce these numbers. There's only one elementary school in here, the number of middle schools, high, so, yes, we have to do this. It's, it's an MDE requirement that we go through these reports, but just the amount of work that's been done, it's taken hold to reduce, it's, it's pretty remarkable. So, I just want to lift that up as well.
We're quite pleased to have 11 fewer schools in federal improvement. So, we're gonna keep that, our, our foot on the gas and have even more make their way out of federal improvement as we are on our pathway to that letter grade B, but also toward even greater excellence in classrooms.
That's, that's, thank you for putting a number on it. All right. Lots of markers of progress. All right. Well, we will continue moving through our information-only items, and I'll invite Ms. Amanda Thomas, our Executive Director of Climate and Wellness. She has two items. The first is the review of the renewal agreement between Heinz Behavioral Health Services and JPS, and the review of the renewal agreement between Marion Counseling and JPS. Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, Dr. Sevak, board members, Dr. Green. Administration presents to you as an information item, the review of a renewal agreement between the Heinz Behavioral Health Services and Jackson Public Schools District. The purpose of this agreement is to continue the established and guided working relationship between Heinz Behavioral Health and the district. Heinz Behavioral Health Services provides therapeutic services to children in Heinz County ages three through 18 with emotional and behavioral problems. Many of these services are provided at the child's school, home, at the Heinz Behavioral Health Center, or in the community. Would like to note that during this contractual period, a number of 839 students within Jackson Public Schools was served by the agency, with 486 being elementary and 353 being in middle and high schools. The data includes the number of intake assessments, individual therapy sessions provided, group services provided, as well as the suicide assessments. A parent survey was also administered to gauge the satisfaction of our parents, and would like to note that we, as administrators within the district, will work closely with this agency, specifically on the recommendation of more services provided in schools.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Similarly, I, I want to lift up the data that we're shared. You know, mental health is often an, an area that we think about frequently with our students. And the numbers in terms of the services provided, that, that I was surprised, astounded at the number of services. So, just for example, I believe this is in the last year, Heinz Behavioral Health Services provided 17,264 individual therapy sessions. Is that, am I reading that number right?
I think that number was for the next agency, actually.
Says, well, it says Heinz Behavioral Health Services, the document I'm looking at. I just want to make sure that regardless of who provided it, I just, is that one year of services?
Tell me, oh, 17, yeah, the number of individual therapy sessions, actually, that's for the contractual period from eight, eight, August of 2021 through the present time.
Okay. So, over two years, it's still a large number. Seventeen, and so, and that's for one contractor.
Yes.
And so, so, you know, there were, you know, 1,100 intake assessments, and, and so, just, it, it just, it represents an important body of work, and when you, when you hear those numbers, it's just, it's, it's, you know, we can always... And when you hear those numbers, it's just, it's, you know, we can always do more. We can always go deeper. And I just wanted to lift up that this represents a lot of work and a child-first approach to education. Even the suicide assessment number, 300, we've done 366 suicide assessments over this contract period with this one contractor. And so just keep it up. We need more, you know, it's a signal that our students need it and, you know, that we'll continue to keep this body of work front and center.
And I would like to just underscore what Dr. Green has stated over and over again. We do have our professional school counselors. However, I mean, all the work that they do, they learn how to identify the signs that some of our students are struggling, but they cannot assess. You know, they cannot do the assessments nor can they do the treatment. So it's so important that we have these mental health providers.
I also really appreciated the parent satisfaction survey. And when you look at these data, you know, 95% of parents felt school-based services were important. 85% reported having adequate access to mental health services. 95% of parents were satisfied with Heinz Behavioral Health Services Children and Youth Department. And these are the types of numbers we want to see. And frankly, we should expect of anyone providing services to our children.
Well, thank you, and thanks to Heinz Behavioral Health Services.
And I know you also have Marion Counseling and want, are you going to share some information? Is that kind of wrapped up in what you've shared already? Or is that next?
It's a little different.
Okay, please.
But I do want to state that there are key differences this year. Heinz Behavioral Health has been servicing predominantly most of our students in elementary, being that, of course, they service families. They will be able to service any of those middle and high school students that they have affiliation with. So, and it will be very similar with Marion Counseling as they do conduct family therapy. Okay. So with Marion Counseling Services, the purpose of this agreement as well is to continue the established and guided working agreement. Marion Counseling will continue to provide mental health services to the district, mental, middle and high school students, as well as any of those students in elementary they're affiliated with. They will continue to provide mental health assessments, crisis services, individual family group counseling, as well as case management and consultation. Again, the data did provide the total number of clients seen within this contractual period, as well as the number of staff members. There were 116 staff members seen by the agency because they do have our employee assistant program, as well as 1,763 students. There was also a total of 26,482 therapy sessions, 8,061 assessments or screeners provided, 30,768 case management sessions, as well as the top diagnosis, those three diagnoses. A parent satisfaction survey was also provided by Marion Counseling Services.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. So again, between the, just, and I appreciate you sharing the numbers from Marion Counseling to, you know, 30, over 30,000 case management sessions. You know, so when you think about the individual counseling, 42,000 sessions. So again, it's just, it just represents an important body of work. So thank you for continuing to keep it front and center and to make sure, and continue, and I would just invite you to continue to bring the requests of this board that you need to continue to make sure our students who are in crisis or who are not in crisis but just need services have what is needed, their families and our staff.
I will do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we will move on to our, I've got to get my bearings. We're going to move on to our information action items. So we'll invite Dr. Cormack back up to the podium. The first, he'll present the next items A, B, and C. So the first is the request to approve the grant agreement between the Phil Hardin Foundation and the Jackson Public School District. The second is the request to approve the renewal agreement between Abbey Van Robotics and JPS for Bates Elementary and a request to approve amended contracts for Bailey Education Group Kirkland Kids First and Pamela Franklin LLC. Dr. Cormack.
Great evening. The administration is recommending the review of the grant agreement between the Phil Hardin Foundation and Community Foundation for Mississippi on behalf of Jackson Public Schools. The Community Foundation has awarded the Community Foundation for Mississippi a $375,000 grant to be split equally among three years to support the expansion of the JPS Community Schools project within the Lanier feeder pattern. We're excited to inaugurate this integrated approach, which encompasses several important features, including before and after school programs, beyond traditional co-curricular and athletic programs, as well as learning opportunities for family and community members, and really thinking about the school as a community hub. And so earlier starts and later into the evenings and thinking about opportunities for family and parent engagement through weekends. These resources will allow us to deepen that work. And just as a point of history, we did receive a $60,000 planning grant from the NDA. And so this was an expansion of that work, some of the ideation that was done within that feeder pattern to propel now this project to deepen the community schools model at Lanier and within the feeder pattern.
Thank you, Dr. Cormack. Board members, are there any questions, comments? Okay, let's continue. We'll take these all up together.
Okay. The administration recommends the approval of the purchase of Abbey or Van Robotics System inclusive of tutoring robots and software for Bates Elementary School. As was mentioned, this is a renewal agreement that is presently in place at Oak Forest Elementary as a pilot. We have some initial positive anecdotal data, but we will need to follow it through, through the end of the year to have the data on assessment. But the levels of student engagement with use of the robotics demonstrate that we would like to have another elementary school by which to pilot this program.
I'm just interested to know how this robotics works within the school.
So it is integrated into science coursework. We have students who learn basic coding and teach the robots to do some rudimentary, you know, kinds of things, walk several distances, pick up items and other things. And so it can be incorporated as a tool for engagement to teach about aspects of, you know, physical science.
That's exciting.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, Dr. Cormack.
All right. And our third item, the administration recommends the approval of the amended contracts for Bailey Education Group, Kirkland Group, Pam Franklin LLC, and Kids First. After reviewing our Benchmark Two data, school and district administrators identified the need for additional supports for teachers to improve academic performance. And these administrators requested additional instructional support in a variety of different subjects and to support our English learners. These additional contract addendums allow principals to use their school improvement funds and other resourcing to expand the contract days, specifically where there has been that track record of success and they've exhausted their initial days.
Thank you, Dr. Cormack. Board members, any questions, comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve items A through C on our information action item agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Cormack. Next, we will invite Ms. Mason up to the podium. She will present information on requests to approve the agreement between Education Networks of America and the Jackson Public School District. Ms. Mason is our Executive Director of Information Technology Services.
Greetings. Good evening.
Good evening.
We are recommending the award of RFP 2022-19 to E&amp;A Services, subsidiary of Education Networks of America Incorporated, to replace our current on-premise phone system with a hosted voice-over IP system in the cloud.
Thank you, Mrs. Mason. Board members, any questions, comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Thompson has moved. Dr. Luckett has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Mason. Next, we'll invite Dr. Knolls to join us at the podium to request the approval of the agreement between Arkansas State University and the Jackson Public School District. Dr. Knolls is our Director of Recruitment.
Good evening. Dr. Green, Board President Seabag, members of the board. The administration is presenting for information action the agreement between Arkansas State University and Jackson Public School District to provide clinical experience through student teaching and internship opportunities in the Jackson Public School District. This is a first-time agreement that will be used to provide Arkansas State University the opportunity to allow student teachers and interns in the School of Education the opportunity for hands-on teaching, learning, and practical classroom experiences with a JPS teacher. The Office of Recruitment has received one request so far, but this partnership will allow us to support future candidates with placement within the district.
Thank you, Dr. Knolls. Board members, are there any questions, comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Aso moved.
Second.
Mr. Figures has moved. Mrs. Thompson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Knolls. Next, we have the request to approve the agreement with A&amp;A Assessment LLC and JPS to comply with the Mississippi Department of Education guidelines for the seal of biliteracy assessment. Dr. Evans, Chanelo, Dr. Chanelo Evans, our Executive Director of Advanced Learning, will present this information.
Superintendent Green, Dr. Seabag, school board members, good evening.
Good evening.
The administration recommends the approval of the end-user license agreement with Avant Assessment and Jackson Public Schools to offer the seal of biliteracy assessments beginning this month. The Mississippi seal of biliteracy was created by state board policy and was adopted in 2019. The Jackson Public School District is one of 16 districts in Mississippi offering this seal of biliteracy. According to MDE, the purpose of the seal of biliteracy is to recognize students who have attained proficiency in English and one or more world languages by the time they graduate high school. And the proficiency will be determined by a passing exam score that MDE should be revealing in the coming weeks. JPS students who meet the requirements for the seal of biliteracy will have this designation indicated on their high school transcript and earn a silver or gold seal, which will be affixed on their high school diploma. This recognition acknowledges the attainment of biliteracy in English and another world language. It signifies to students, employers, and post-secondary institutions that these students have achieved very high standards in terms of biliteracy. It is a statement of accomplishment that helps our students show their readiness for college and their engagement as a global citizen. It also gives an opportunity for students who are native Spanish speakers or native other-world language speakers to work and partner with native English speakers to help each other improve proficiency in English or in the other world language. So I'm open to questions if you should have any.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Board members, any questions, comments?
Do we have students already identified who are interested in this opportunity?
We do. We have students at all seven high schools actually working to obtain the seal this coming May. This assessment is really cool because it allows students to take the test more than one time. So if approved tonight, we hope to offer this assessment this month and use it as baseline in that should they pass it, the scores count. If not, they can retake the assessment in May as well. And so there's even an opportunity to get a national biliteracy seal as well if they pass the Mississippi one.
Thank you.
I would love to see the numbers when we get them. I think this will pass. And so, and I'm also curious, I did ask a question around just kind of what's our current level of offerings in our high schools. I was surprised. I didn't know that at Forest Hill, you can take two years of Mandarin Chinese. That was exciting to see.
Sleep on us.
That's right. Or two years of Latin at Murrah.
Two years, exactly. I would love to see more. I'd love to, you know, just, and so part of the motivation for us for the numbers is, you know, my next question will be, what do we need to do to get more students who want that?
I was waiting for you to ask. So, you know, this, I have been so thankful to the vision of Mrs. Marshall Thomas, number one, who brought this to our attention, and then to be able to work to spearhead this project. It has shed light about, you know, as we have focused to improve our math data and English and science, what about this opportunity with world languages? As our state is changing and its demographics, we could position students to come back and be interpreters for JPS, to be EL teachers for JPS or for major corporations that come into this city. We could train them to do that right here. That means we need textbooks, you know, resources, professional development. And I have been so impressed by our colleagues who are willing to do the work to help us to get those things and bring them before the board. So we will see more of that support. This year is a baseline year where we're getting started. Those foreign language teachers meet every month. We had, we met on the 80% professional development day last month. We'll meet again this month to continue the plan and so that teachers at one school can help support even teachers, students at other schools to make sure that all of the students who are in our pipeline achieve this target.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Dr. Green?
Just another note on this. As you'll recall from our vision, right, our effort is to prepare our children, our scholars, to go out into the world and be dynamic and do great things. It's hard to be out there in the world if you don't speak the language, right? And so as we think about this seal of biliteracy, as we think about other efforts to help our scholars to see themselves positioned, not only in their neighborhoods, not only in their hometown, not only in their state, not only in this country, but as part of the, as a global citizen, you know, all of these experiences, this vision for preparing them and giving them access to and a vision for what the world could hold for them, whether they continue to live in Jackson or Singapore, you know, these are the kinds of things that we've got to do in order to build there. I was really, I appreciated the question about the pipeline for young people and learning languages earlier. IB is notorious, and that's built into the program, as I understand it, you know, foreign language learning. I would love to see it all across the district. Frankly, I'd love to see an expectation that our scholars go even further as a requirement for their graduation from JPS in a foreign language. And that could be signing, that could be coding, or any of these foreign languages here. So stay tuned, board members. We, we're on to something and just excited to try and create these experiences for our scholars that'll make them competitive.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Well, I know we stand ready. I also do, Dr. Evans, I also appreciate the way you swapped the framing of an English native speaker to also make sure we're mindful of our other students who, for whom English is not their first language, as we think of this as something for them as well. So thank you for that, just that framing.
Thank you.
All right, board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Mrs. Thompson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda items for finance. All the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any other questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda for finance?
Aso moved.
Second.
Mr. Figures has moved. Ms. Thompson has seconded. Before I call the vote, Mr. Figures, there's 25 electric buses in this docket, so I know that's been a passion project for you. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries.
Hey.
Awesome. Very exciting. 25 electric buses, JPS.
Amen.
All right. Next, we have our consent agenda items personnel. All the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Mrs. Thompson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The mo-
Aye.
The motion carries. We do have a couple of items for executive session, so is there a motion to close the general session to consider an executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Figures has moved. Mrs. Thompson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.